It is March 10th, we're at 6:05 PM. Although, we convened for a special financing authority meeting at 4:35 for the record. And then, we also started our meeting at 4:30, our regular meeting, but it started as a closed session. We've now returned out of closed session. There is no need to report anything out of that closed session. But, the first things first, we're going to ask that we do the pledge of allegiance. And tonight's pledge will be led by Stephanie Wiggly, senior at Tustin High School. Thank you, Stephanie.
Please, please stand, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, thank you very much. And, we have already adopted the agenda. And, at this point, I'd like to essentially ask that, or just report out that Tammy Bullard is out of town presently. She cannot be here today. And, I'm asking that the board excuse her absence at tonight's meeting. I'll make a motion for that. Is there a second?
A second.
A second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, she's been excused from attending the meeting. And, with respect to this meeting, are there any public comments, either on items that are on the agenda, or any public comment by anybody? Okay, seeing none, I am going to move to board recognition. Okay, the following student is going to be recognized for her achievement here tonight, and that's Serena Jackson, a senior from Foothill High School. Is Serena here? Would you please come forward, Serena? Alright. So, we are going to announce, okay, Mr. and Mrs. Ost are also coming up. They are from the Tustin Public Schools Foundation, and they're very involved with an enterprise called the Dinosaur Dash. And Serena was also involved with that. And, we want to congratulate her for winning the 2014 Dinosaur Dash Logo Design, which Mrs. Ost is showing. And, let's give her a big hand. Now, this was as part of a logo design contest. It was sponsored by the Tustin Public Schools Foundation, and it's sponsored annually to get a student to produce the logo for each, for each race. And, that's been going on for over 20 years now. And, the contest was open to middle school and high school students throughout the district. Serena's winning design will be seen on the 24th Annual Dinosaur Dash t-shirts, race pamphlets, flyers, print advertising, and other materials. The annual 2K, 5K, and 10K run, and the 15K, and now 50K bike tour will be held on Sunday, November 2nd, at the Marketplace in Tustin. And, Tustin Public Schools Foundation has given her a cash award of $100,000. No, I'm sorry. It was a typo. It's a typo. A cash award of $100 was presented to Serena and 102, our art teacher at Foothill High School, and that's Jeff Gillette. And, so, we're really proud of you. Go Knights, and a way to, way to produce the, the winning logo for our next race. Again, November 2nd, 2014. Thank you very much, Serena. Again, he's going to be making a presentation on behalf of the Tustin Public Schools Foundation. And, we appreciate all the work your, your, your foundation does for our school, here in and year out. So, here we go.
Thank you, James. On behalf of the Tustin Public Schools Foundation, I'm giving James and the Tustin Unified School District a check for $38,328 tonight. That is broken up into different areas and categories. And, the first category is our, is Save Our Sports, which goes to the six TUSD middle schools. And, that's for the coaches, the athletic directors, and administrators that make possible the volleyball tournament and games that will be played this spring. And, the tournament will be held at Hughes Middle School this year from 9 until noon. And, students from all six middle schools will be participating, and they would not be able to participate if we didn't have the money to provide the coaches and the athletic directors and administrators to be there. The other part of this is $23,328. And, this month, the foundation is pleased to award grants that support Common Core coaches, Just Write leveled readers, writing instruction, interactive math programs, fine arts, culinary arts, and social studies at the TUSD schools. And, I'm sure, school board, you like hearing that we're helping to support Common Core, and technology, and other areas that you work so hard in, in promoting, and in giving
I just want to thank you, and on behalf of the board, want to thank the Tustin Public
us here in the Tustin Unified School District. We've also included a grant to Foothill's Art Department in honor of the Dinosaur Dash
Schools Foundation. We, we know that your enterprise with all the, all the good people on that, on that
Logo winner. And, the Grants Committee also awarded music funds for middle school instrumental music,
foundation, you know, really do an amazing job for us in terms of raising the funds
partially funding a baritone sax and music stands.
that we need to help shore up some of the, some of the areas where we have, we have problems
In addition, a Go Green grant was awarded to Lambert Elementary School for their school
in meeting the needs. And, you're just a great bridge for that. And, I also want to commend the foundation on the fact that, you know, you started out
garden and a Family School Beautification Day.
with the SOS, Save Our Sports program, as a response to the Great Recession, and all
We appreciate all the time and effort that the principals and teachers in all the schools
the, the furloughs that we had to take, and all the cutbacks and the budget cuts.
take in supporting the Tustin Public Schools Foundation. And, by their support, we get funds that we can give back to the school district and
And, you know, I think it's a, it's pretty impressive that you are continuing to do
help students, and teachers, and programs throughout the year.
it as, even as the economic picture brightens a little bit. It's, it'd be easy to say, okay, we're not going to do that anymore, but you've continued
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. to do and fund the SOS program, and we really deeply appreciate it. So, my thanks to Carol Burby Garrett, and everybody that works on that foundation day in and day out. You are the epitome of what an active citizen can do for the school. So, we really appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Okay, and so, we're going to be moving on to the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Laird. Good evening, board members, staff, guests. It's really a pleasure for me to give a report tonight about something that was the first ever in Tustin Unified School District. And, that is a breakfast to recognize one student from each of our 28 schools who has found school success, even though they faced great obstacles. And, they overcame those obstacles with grit, with determination, with perseverance, positive attitudes. And, it was really an inspiring morning. I want to thank our Tustin administrators, Management Association. They're the ones who put it on, they funded it, they got some donations. Tustin High School hosted it in the new sports pavilion. The Tustin High School girls and boys' dance teams performed. Nutritional services put on a wonderful breakfast. And, we were joined by the 28 students who are being recognized, as well as teachers and principals, and the parents of those 28 students. And, really, research shows over and over again, it matters much less about a person's native IQ than it does what lies in their heart. And, and those students really demonstrated that. It was one, one father stood talking to me afterwards, and his student had been recognized. And, he said, gee, you know, I, sometimes I feel like I have to work hard, and life's kind of a bummer. And, then I watched these kids who were overcoming all these, you know, things, from homelessness to illness to, you know, other things, and I just need to buck up. And, it was really, really an inspiring morning for everybody. One of the students who was recognized is Max, Max's last name, Max Wilford. And, Max has a foundation. Max is a, an Arroyo first grader, and his parents have started a foundation to support children's brain research, or brain cancer research. And, Max is battling brain cancer. And, so, Max had this dream of creating, of the longest chain ever, of rainbow looms. And, so, the teachers at Arroyo put together a video, because evidently Jimmy Kimmel has a thing for rainbow looms. And, so, they put together this really wonderful video that says, Jimmy Kimmel, you have got to meet this kid, Max. He is a phenomenal kid. They sent the video, about a three or four minute video, to Jimmy Kimmel's people, and they responded immediately, we need him on the show next week. And, so, on February 26th, Max and his principal Maggie Viegas made an appearance on the Jimmy Kimmel Show, where Jimmy Kimmel was wearing an entire suit made out of rainbow looms. And, Jimmy Kimmel was so impressed with Max and the efforts that he and his parents are putting out, that he actually donated that suit. And, the proceeds of having raffled that suit on eBay, or having it gone up, again, it brought in $40,000 that he donated to the Max Love Foundation. And, then eBay didn't want to be left out, and they said, so, for everybody who likes and shares a message on Facebook about this, we'll give a dollar. So, another $10,000 check came in. And, so, pretty good effort, right? For a six-year-old guy, I think he might be seven now. But, that's the sort of thing that our students are doing every day, and we're very, very proud of them. Finally, I just want to make one comment. We have a calendar committee that's made up of teachers, classified staff, and parents, led by Julie Mitchell and Chuck Lewis and the HR office. And, they've been working very hard to try and come up with a plan to how to get our district's start date to be sooner, so that our students can have a better opportunity to compete with kids from around the country in these high-stakes standardized exams. And, so, they, they've sent out information to staff. There will be information in parent newsletters. A survey will be coming out next week, looking for feedback about how best to achieve that goal, particularly in make, moving a transition to an earlier start date for the Tustin Unified School District. So, thanks to Julie, Chuck, and everybody who's serving on that committee. And, that's my report for the evening.
Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Franklin. And, I, I think I remember Mrs. Viegas being here and saluting Max's efforts a couple months ago. And, it's amazing, again, what the human effort can do, get him on the Jimmy Kimmel Show. And, if you haven't seen it, you can also go on YouTube, and you can get the episode of the show and watch it. It's quite a rewarding thing to watch. So, I'd recommend, if anybody's interested in that, to get on YouTube and search for that. And, you can, you can see that episode in which Max got on TV along with Mrs. Viegas. So, that'd be great. Now, we're going to move on, at this point, to our board representative reports. And, so, at this point, I'm going to recognize Kristen Fong from Beckman High School. Thank you, Kristen. One second here, we're going to help you with the microphone. And, can you say President Laird again with the microphone on? I like the way that sounds.
Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present the recent and future events that occur at Beckman. As the year flies by, students continue to thrive and excel in the many activities that they participate in. On February 20th, the Pink Ribbon Club hosted their annual Mr. Patriot pageant. The Performing Arts Center was sold out, as the top 11 senior boys at Beckman partook in a dance talent and questionnaire portion. It was filled with laughter and applause, and most importantly, raising a tremendous amount of money for breast cancer awareness. Last week, the WASD Committee visited Beckman High School. The excellence of the teachers along with the staff proved Beckman to be the wonderful school that it is. The growing use of technology for students inside and outside of the classroom was evident, making for a wonderful experience. Thursday, March 6th, Beckman's Wind Ensemble class had their spring concert at Beckman. Last Friday, this class also had the opportunity to visit Cal State Fullerton to give a performance for the crowd. Both of these events had numerous people cheering, and their hard work had paid off as they gave a performance to remember. The Beckman High School Orchestra will be making their debut at the Renee and Henry Sigistrom Hall as part of the inaugural Philharmonic Invitational High School Orchestra Festival on Friday night, March 21st. This Thursday, Beckman's ASB will put on an assembly for the eighth grade future Patriots. It will show these middle schoolers the opportunities, events, and four A's that truly resemble Beckman High. We hope it will pump up these future Patriots as they look forward to attending Beckman High School next year. The winter sports have just about wrapped up, with girls' water polo soccer and basketball going to CIF, along with boys' basketball and boys' soccer. This upcoming month, we are excited to cheer on our spring sports as they begin. It has been a competitive week for the spring sports, with boys' volleyball, girls' lacrosse, boys' tennis, and boys' golf coming out victorious. We are so excited to see what the rest of the season has in store. The CASSY will take place next week for all the sophomores. Teachers are opening up specific tutorials to help these students in both the math and English courses. We would like to wish them the best of luck. With all the activities and events occurring, it has definitely been an active month at Beckman. The success of the spring sports continues to excel, along with the academics and the arts. Although a busy month, we're certainly excited for what is more to come. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fong. And, now, we'll move on to Becca Floorman, senior at Foothill High School, and their student representative.
Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. Hillview is proud of our working relationship with the American Red Cross. During the school year, we host two blood drives, which helps to save 300 people's lives. This, this past Friday, several students attended the Red Cross Appreciation Breakfast at the Irvine Marriott. Last, last week, 10 students spent the day at Lambert, helping out the elementary teachers as part of the Hillview Helpers Program. Hillview's, Hillview would like to thank the Quanis Club for sponsoring our Student of the Month luncheon. We appreciate, we appreciate Dr. Franklin being our guest at this month's luncheon. The end of the year is coming up quickly. Senior students are, are working hard to complete their senior portfolio and prepare for the senior exit interview. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Appreciate it. And, now, calling Stephanie Wiggly one more time up to the, to do something for the board meeting, and this time as a student board representative from Tustin High School.
Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. On February 28th, Tustin High had a basketball game against Hart High School, where Tustin was the victor. We would like to extend a big thank you to Foothill High School for letting us to use their gym when arrows were leaking from the rain. It was an amazing game with a huge turnout, not just from our ASB members, but also from our student body as well. Our theme was red out, and it definitely was a red affair. Our thunderous cheers and the bleachers being so close to the court, the team was able to feel the enthusiasm from the Tiller crowd, knowing that a win was in the making. Puzzles for pennies. A fundraiser for leukemia is one of the many community activities ASB has scheduled for the month of March. The purpose of this fundraiser is to have every classroom donate coins, and the class with the largest donations receive a pasta party. Last Tuesday, our student body was able to make, take not one, but four Ruder buses to the basketball CIF game at Calabasas High School. We had well over 200 students attend, showing their Tiller pride and spirit, and support for our team. It was a thrilling suspenseful game, and our basketball team played their best we've seen all year. However, the game was tough, and the outcome was not in Tustin's favor. But, at the end of the game, the entire student body started chanting LOVE, we love our varsity, to get the boys' spirit back up. Starting this week, ASB is starting their class elections, as well as the cabinet positions for next year. ASB's election commission has been working hard to get the applications out to the entire school, and speeches will start this Wednesday. And, the results will be announced after school on Friday. Last but certainly not least, Twitter was very active on Saturday night, when our whole entire student body found out that our boys' basketball team is going to be going to the state playoffs. We are going to Mater Dei Trula Vista, Wednesday at 7:30. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggly. And, now, for Chris Terry, Tustin High School. He's our student board member tonight, and thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you. Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. Hillview is proud of our working relationship with the American Red Cross. During the school year, we host two blood drives, which helps to save 300 people's lives. This, this past Friday, several students attended the Red Cross Appreciation Breakfast at the Irvine Marriott. Last, last week, 10 students spent the day at Lambert, helping out the elementary teachers as part of the Hillview Helpers Program. Hillview's, Hillview would like to thank the Quanis Club for sponsoring our Student of the Month luncheon. We appreciate, we appreciate Dr. Franklin being our guest at this month's luncheon. The end of the year is coming up quickly. Senior students are, are working hard to complete their senior portfolio and prepare for the senior exit interview. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Appreciate it. And, now, calling Stephanie Wiggly one more time up to the, to do something for the board meeting, and this time as a student board representative from Tustin High School.
Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. On February 28th, Tustin High had a basketball game against Hart High School, where Tustin was the victor. We would like to extend a big thank you to Foothill High School for letting us to use their gym when arrows were leaking from the rain. It was an amazing game with a huge turnout, not just from our ASB members, but also from our student body as well. Our theme was red out, and it definitely was a red affair. Our thunderous cheers and the bleachers being so close to the court, the team was able to feel the enthusiasm from the Tiller crowd, knowing that a win was in the making. Puzzles for pennies. A fundraiser for leukemia is one of the many community activities ASB has scheduled for the month of March. The purpose of this fundraiser is to have every classroom donate coins, and the class with the largest donations receive a pasta party. Last Tuesday, our student body was able to make, take not one, but four Ruder buses to the basketball CIF game at Calabasas High School. We had well over 200 students attend, showing their Tiller pride and spirit, and support for our team. It was a thrilling suspenseful game, and our basketball team played their best we've seen all year. However, the game was tough, and the outcome was not in Tustin's favor. But, at the end of the game, the entire student body started chanting LOVE, we love our varsity, to get the boys' spirit back up. Starting this week, ASB is starting their class elections, as well as the cabinet positions for next year. ASB's Election Commission has been working hard to get the applications out to the entire school, and speeches will start this Wednesday. And, the results will be announced after school on Friday. Last but certainly not least, Twitter was very active on Saturday night, when our whole entire student body found out that our boys' basketball team is going to be going to the state playoffs. We are going to Mater Dei Trula Vista, Wednesday at 7:30. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggly. And, now, for Chris Terry, Tustin High School. He's our student board member tonight, and thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you. Good evening, President Laird, members of the board, Superintendent Franklin, district staff, and members of the audience. Over the past weeks, schools from around the nation celebrated Read Across America, an annual reading motivation and awareness program that calls for children to get excited about reading on March 2nd, the birthday of beloved cartoonist, poet, and children's author, Dr. Seuss. In Tustin Unified, each school had its own take on Read Across America. At Red Hill Elementary, the PTA purchased "The Day of the Crayon" quilt by Drew Dewalt and Oliver Jeffers for every teacher to read to their students. Both students and staff dressed as crayons, and loved ones were invited to come to campus in order to participate in the reading events. At Peter's Canyon, a week-long book fair was held in the multipurpose room, and students were able to sign a pledge, promising to read at least two books during the course of the program. Students and staff also participated in Dr. Seuss-themed dress-up events, such as Cat in the Hat Day and Thing One and Thing Two Day, where they could wear their favorite hats and choose a friend and dress as twins. Well, Movista's Teacher of the Year, Krista Johnson, created a document with several QR codes that link to various Dr. Seuss books. This document was shared with schools across the district, such as Gwinfoss, where students searched through children's books to answer riddles for a Dr. Seuss-themed scavenger hunt. Members of the Tustin Santa Ana Rotary Club read their favorite books to students in every classroom at Robert Heidemann Elementary School. Dr. Franklin read two classic Dr. Seuss books, The Lorax and Green Eggs and Ham, to a large group of students in the multipurpose room at Tustin Memorial Academy. And, other district office administrators read at various elementary schools throughout the district. Last but certainly not least, Tustin Mayor Al Murray was at the Ladera Ranch, Ladera Elementary School library last Monday, reading to students. The mayor also talked about the importance of reading and emphasized the value of volunteerism in public schools. While Read Across America may only last for a few days or even a week, the importance of its message continues throughout the year. As Dr. Seuss's birthday fades into the past, we must persist in our efforts to promote reading in our nation's youth. Make sure that your loved ones always have books in hand, and whether it be the community library, local schools, or the charity of your choice, donate your time and resources to help bring the gift of reading to those who lack the support or resources to read on their own. To end with a quote by Dr. Seuss, "The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go." Thank you, and have a good night.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Terry. And, I think everybody, at least in the United States, has been touched by Dr. Seuss, Dr. Seuss in some way. That's the one common denominator that the, the human race has with, with respect to Dr. Seuss. So, that's, we really appreciate your comments here tonight.
Yes.
Okay. This is the TUSD Connect Initiative, and we're kind of, we're trying to see what's happening in the schools with respect to technology and the infusion of the Measure S, and all, all the proceeds that the taxpayers helped provide us in, in the last general election, in passing that bond. And, so, we, as a board, like to get an update on this, and we appreciate you coming to share some bright spots with us. Thank you.
I couldn't have said it better myself, because we are focusing again on TUSD Connect, which incorporates both the Common Core, as well as Measure S. And, our digital learning coaches have been working diligently with their very willing fellows to implement technology that is truly embedded within the, with the, within the instruction. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing DLC Susan Moffett and her fellow pioneer teacher, Missy Ash Belay. They're going to share their experiences as coach and fellow, as well as share Kahoot, which is a student response gathering system that has kind of caught fire in TUSD. It's really kind of a gateway technology that is both highly engaging for teachers and students. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Missy has been teaching the novel Night in her classroom by Ellie Vizel, and she is coming up on doing an assessment. So, we wanted to engage the students in review and make sure they're comprehending the novel. And, so, we videotaped some of the experience the kids had with their experience with Kahoot. So, here we go.
Wow! Holy cow!
You all love this one.
I, I heard something you're talking about, I know.
Yay!
Oh, I'm talking. Come here.
Oh, I'm tipping, I'm still rocking the house. Nice. Jasmine, Annie, Andrew B., and Paige.
Do you get more points for answering? More points for answering it quickly, but you need to...
Yes!
Three, two, one.
Kahoot was a really fun way to learn, because we were playing the game, and I was learning without even realizing.
Kahoot is a great tool for studying, for quizzes, and learning new things, while also being fun and adding a new energy to the classroom.
they are able to provide for us, we were trying to boil it down to something very quick, and it's difficult to do. So, I kind of picked four areas, and I've got some talking points here, so I stay on track. The first one is peer collaboration. And, as you can see at the screen behind you, one of the things that Susan helped me do is put together a performance task. I actually had a quiz, or a test in mind with Johnny Tremaine, and she actually helped me put this together through Google Docs, and so that the kids were able to access this on Haiku, on their phones. this on Haiku, on their phones, on iPads that they're already bringing to school with the BYOD. And all the information is on the Haiku page, and they were able to do this. And what was fantastic about this is the information is downloaded into a Google form. And I literally, the correction time is minimal in comparison to going paper after paper after paper. I have an Excel spreadsheet that I could scan through relatively quickly to take a look at the results of the test, and time-saving was phenomenal. We're actually also in the beginning stages of doing Civil War and putting together a performance task for the Civil War. The other area that I'd like to discuss, and I might combine these two, it's research and DLC support. Research, obviously, she saves me a great deal of time. She researches applications that could be implemented in the classroom. One example is Videolicious, which there is a free download of that. It's about a minute long, and the kids will be getting a term that they'll be actually researching the term and doing a video of themselves with the term, and they'll be able to upload that video right onto Haiku. And so the kids, instead of doing guided notes that I put together, they're creating their own guided notes for whatever chapter we're working on. As far as support, again, I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record, but she gets to do a great deal of the work for me. Thank you very much. Right now, I'm in the process of doing something called the Question Formulation Technique. There's a book called Make Just One Change, and it's about critical level thinking. And right now, it's all being done on papers and in the classroom. She's already coming up with ideas on how we can actually put this on Haiku or use extreme collaboration to throw it up on the board, because the kids generate these questions. So, that's just another one of the many, many ways. And then, of course, you saw the tech demonstrations with Kahoot, extreme collaboration. As far as the benefit to myself and the students, really because of the time that she's saving me with all the research that she's doing, I'm saving on my time management, I'm saving on my classroom management, and I'm able to obviously go through more material and go deeper into the material. So, as far as the benefit of the DLCs, I really, I can't even put a measure on it. Right now, it's been phenomenal. I'm excited for next year and to see how that goes. Any questions you guys have?
Any questions?
Were they using those specific devices, or were they using anything that was like their iPods or their tablets?
In regards to Kahoot or both?
Both.
Both, yeah. They were using their iPhones. They bring, parents who allow them to bring the iPads to school, and they've signed the BYOD. Any devices, they're able to do that, and they're able to do the Kahoot.
And there was a student who didn't have a device, so they used the classroom computer. So, it could be anything that's connected to the internet.
Other questions you might have?
Yeah, I'm just curious. The DLC is a digital learning coach, right?
The rock star, yes.
I know, I know. So, do we, I'm just curious, do you think we have the right amount of them? I mean, or are we seeing a phenomenon of the teachers that may be hesitant to get involved or seeing their other teachers just really digging the stuff and loving it, and then we're, you know, there's just more of a demand for the digital learning coach? Do we have the right amount going right now in terms of the numbers? Or how's the supply and demand on that?
That's an excellent question that I wish I actually had a more concrete response to, because I can only speak to my experience.
I think Missy thinks there's exactly enough.
Right, I have her. I don't need any more. She's perfect. But I can see something, obviously, we're going to be in a big learning curve, and I can see something where the demand could very possibly go up. We're going to be one-to-one, second through eighth grade and high school. So, yeah, there's definitely a possibility for it. Sorry if I'm stepping on your toes.
No, that was perfect. I think one of the keys is, and the people who applied for it really are to be commended. So, Missy had to make an application to be a fellow, and so, applications were collected throughout the district. And then there was a selection process, because we had more teachers volunteer to be a fellow than we had slots for fellows. And I don't remember what that ratio was. Kathy or Crystal may remember.
It was about double. So, we had about twice as many teachers.
So, to answer your question, we could probably then double the number of DLCs and still have people for them to coach. Of course, resources are limited, scarce, but the power, and I think everybody who's has a coach, like Missy, has, we've heard them over and over, the power of the model and the people who are serving that role. I should mention that Susan Moffett, her name came up. I was in a group of superintendents from across the country. We were listening to a presentation about this new app called Videolicious. So, it's an app that you make videos with very easily. And the guy pulled up a page from the last week of Twitter tweets that had been up about different Videolicious.
Products?
Product, not products, but really products that had been produced, right? Videos that had been produced. On the very first page was one from Susan Moffett from Tustin Unified School District, using it for a classroom activity. And so, it was pretty impressive that the Tustin crowd, this is a high-powered group, these digital learning coaches.
The other comment I might make, and I don't know, again, where we're going with this, and I might be stepping out of bounds, but I would imagine that individuals such as myself could be a resource on the campuses as well. So, although I might be careful to volunteer my time that way. Dang it, caught on mic and everything, so.
Well, Ms. Moffett, are you still at Hughes, right?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, because I have a digital learning coach. Did you know that? It's my sixth grader at Hughes, and Caroline is my coach. My own cultural habits with technology and the computer have changed just by virtue of, you know, what she's doing, and it's pretty interesting how that's working in peer groups. So, every once in a while, I get to help her when she needs something on the computer, but it's mainly a one-way street. She helps me. But we really appreciate all you're doing there, because we need to get up on the learning curve, and, you know, our pledge to the taxpayer is we want to use these devices to their capacity. We do not want to be accused of using less than what they're capable of doing. That would be, that would not be good. So, we want to be using these things 100% to the greatest extent possible, using 100% of the capacity of the devices. So, we really appreciate your efforts in making that happen. Any further comments, Mr. Davis?
I had a question. I'm going to ask you to completely oversimplify what happens in your classroom over, say, a week. But two things that happen, right, is obviously there's some time spent where students are receiving information. They're watching a video, they're reading something, they're listening to you, right? And then, there's activities, obviously, from these where they're producing information.
Correct.
And I know you did a lot of other things too, but what do you think the ratio of those things, those two activities are over the course of, you know, a week? I know it probably differs day to day, but...
Well, for myself, I actually also flip my classroom. So, my lectures are video lectures. So, as far as disseminating information, I would have to say, in my classroom, the dissemination of information within the classroom takes place, what do you think, a 50/50? So, yeah, it was probably 50% dissemination of information and teaching, direct teaching, whatever style I end up using for whatever I'm teaching at that time, and 50% of project-based learning. I'm trying to move towards, closer towards project-based learning. So, that's where the QFT comes in that lends itself very nicely to it, and I'm looking forward to, obviously, incorporating the technology. So, I met about 50/50 in my particular classroom.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, just for general reference, flipping the classroom is lecturing to the students, somewhat like a lecture to the students the night before. That's their homework, is to hear a lecture. And then they go in the next day and either do a homework assignment, and the teacher verifies they know how to do it, or they do a project, and the teacher verifies they know how to do it, and they get the concepts down and the building blocks for moving on to the next session. So, but we really appreciate your time here today and coming and sharing what you're doing there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so as promised, are we, do we have any more bright spots? We're done with bright spots. Okay, so as promised, I'll excuse you ladies to, if you'd like to, either you can stay or you can go do homework or whatever you need to be doing at this point. So, we'll have a short 30-second recess to handle anybody who'd like to leave at this point. Thank you very much for your informative reports today. Okay, we're going to resume with discussion action items, and the first one is just a hearing. Have I missed public comments? Okay, I did earlier ask, did I ask for public comments earlier?
You did.
Okay. Are there anybody, anybody at this point would like to make a public comment on anything? Okay, seeing that there's nobody, we're going to move on to discussion action items. The first thing is a public hearing. It's required by statute, probably a statute set forth in 1986 dealing with raising revenue based on building construction of new businesses or new residences. And that's a public hearing to receive comments on the increase of statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial construction pursuant to education codes 17620 and government code section 65995. Can I have a motion, or I'm going to open up the hearing, and I'm holding a hearing to consider the report which was submitted to the board, and that is Fee Justification Study for Residential Commercial Industrial Development, and consider adopting a resolution of the Board of the District to Increase Statutory School Facility Fees Imposed on New Residential Commercial Industrial Construction Pursuant to Those Codes I mentioned earlier. And at this time, the board is open to receiving comments regarding the proposed increase of school facility fees for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. I'm opening that hearing. Does anybody want to be heard in this hearing regarding the issue I just set forth? Seeing that nobody is coming forward, we are going to close the hearing. We're going to move on to the resolution of the matter. It's 03-09-14. It's the resolution of the Board of Education of the Tustin Unified School District approving the increase in statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial construction pursuant to the education and government codes I've previously cited. And is there a motion to adopt this resolution, which basically will do the following? It will create an increase in statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial construction pursuant to the codes I've previously cited, and increase the existing school facility fees from 320 to 336. That's $3.20 to $3.36 for residential development, and from $0.51 to $0.54 for commercial and industrial development, and that's per square foot, right? Is that per square foot? That's the increase in the excise or the tax for that type of development, and it's to take effect 60 days from today's date, which would be May 9th, 2014. Is there a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Cento, seconded by Mr. Ablev to pass this resolution. Is there any discussion over this issue? Would you like to shed any light on it?
Other than, this is just a normal process, once we have the ability to increase our fees. Jeff Hammel here, who's done the justification study, is available to answer any questions the board may have, but if there are none, we can...
Could he just give us a brief overview of what he, scope of what he did?
Sure. And I guess Francie has a question.
Okay, and so, Mr. Hammel, good evening.
The executive summary version, you know, the short version.
Sure. President Laird, board members, yes, this particular report is done every other year. The State Allocation Board in January of even-numbered years will increase the, what we refer to as the Level One Fee. And so, our task was to simply provide a report that identifies really what the impacts are on your district specifically, and to the extent that we can demonstrate a need or a facilities impact that's greater than that, then you're authorized to obviously impose that new increased fee amount. In the report, we actually identify a fee that's about $11 a square foot. So, even though you're adopting a new fee going up from 320 to 336, it's really only covering about 30% of the actual impacts from new residential development.
Okay, great. Ms. Cento, you have a question?
I always find these reports very interesting, because they bring information from a number of different sources. The projected future residential units, I am the official worryer of what is going to happen in the IBC and the Metro East overlay? And how, we show only the ones that are permitted, not the ones that are zoned? Is that how that works? The one I know about is the City of Santa Ana, that those 256 units are one development at the corner of Cabrillo Park and First, but there are other undeveloped tracts of lands that are zoned the same way, but yet those don't, I mean, maybe it doesn't impact this year's analysis?
This particular report, and if you recall, we used to do a different report of a school facilities needs analysis, which was directly tied to future approved tentative tract maps, and you had to confine your analysis to those future units that were going to perhaps come online in the next five years. This, we're reaching out further, and it's like anything, we're doing it on a per-dwelling unit or per-square-foot basis. So presumably, at some point, those dwelling units in Santa Ana will come online, and when they do, it'll be this fee or the fee that's in effect at that time.
In other words, it's a lot more than 256. It's zoned for a lot more than 256 units, if these other developers...
That's correct.
So, we're not, we haven't been talking about the impacts of those yet?
Correct, but we're, again, we're expressing it on a per-dwelling unit basis, so it's...
I realize we can issue levy the tax, but it just seems, you know, with each incremental, well, anyway, it's okay. It just, it doesn't impact the tax. Right, I mean, we can levy that tax or those fees, not taxes, those fees on the future units, but the reason that, I guess I'm asking why, when you show future dwelling units, what's the criteria? That it's permitted, that they have permits or...
No, we're basically looking at the future with the available knowns that we have, and we do communicate with the planning agencies, and to the extent that they, they're aware of projects that are coming down the pike, they will, you know, either confirm or give us some feedback with respect to average dwelling unit size and the type of dwelling units. It's just, for example, in Santa Ana, there was a move, and there's zoning for that in the future, but there isn't anything currently on the horizon that they can provide us additional information about.
That they choose to, okay. It takes effect 60 days from now? So, if a project is approved and permitted, is, at what point do they get the higher fee? In other words, are sticks in the ground? Is it...
No, this is a building permit, so any development in the district that comes in in the next 60 days will still be charged the $3.20 that's currently in effect.
As long as they have the building permit.
That's correct.
Just one final comment, just, you know, we have a lot of development that is happening, not only, you know, within the city, but also on the base area, and even if it's just a fraction of a dollar, it starts to add up and will add to our coffers to do facilities, either upgrades or additions and so forth. So, this is an important step for us to do this on a regular basis every two years.
Yes, and I think it's basically, it's just, I wouldn't even say fair share, I mean, it's just a portion of the fair share, a fraction of the fair share that they need to provide to, they're making the buildings and causing the impact of people needing schools, and we need, whenever there's a statutory raise that's allowed, we need to capitalize on that, because we're only, we're only getting a fraction of what it really costs to us. So, we appreciate the substantiation report that you drafted and authored, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so with respect to this resolution, 030914, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of passing the resolution, say aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, four to zero. Moving on to the next discussion action item, it's our second interim financial report for 2013-14, and just for purposes of receiving the report and having a vote, can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, and it's been moved by Ms. Cento, seconded by Mr. Ablev, to basically receive and potentially certify the report with a vote, and at this point, we're going to ask that we be presented the second interim financial report. Thank you, Jocelyn.
And I, Mr. Laird, I'm going to make a couple of comments while Tony and Jocelyn and Diana are getting set up. You know, this is the second interim report, so it's basically an update of where we are this year financially. But I just want to make mention, we have really received some excellent feedback and input to the district regarding our local control accountability plan, and so, we've met with a variety of stakeholder groups, parents, teachers, other staff members, and they have been providing feedback about what we should be doing with next year. next year's new money that's coming to us under the local control funding formula. And so, this year, I think the Board did an excellent job of taking the new money, and we've split it up among programs, some raises for employees, a slight decrease in class size, and as it turns out, those parallel very much the feedback that we're getting from these various stakeholder groups about what we should do with new money next year. And there's some variations and some additions, but I just want to point out that if anybody else has feedback, Kathy continues to work on our LCAP plan, Kathy Nielsen, our Chief Academic Officer, and so people can always send suggestions to her about what to do with new dollars. And we're very, very thankful to be having this issue of having some new dollars and making decisions about how to spend it.
Okay. So, Mr. President, members of the Board, tonight we will present an overview of the district's second interim budget report for the 2013-14 fiscal year. In reviewing the budget timeline, our first budget was presented to the Board in June, as the Board is aware, and the revised final budget was actually reviewed and approved by the Board in August. The first interim budget was approved by the Board in December, and tonight we will present the last formal budget that will be approved before the close of this fiscal year. The second interim budget report covers any changes that have happened since November to current and going into the end of the year. So, what's happened since, since November? While all salary negotiations have been completed and paid, we're also continuing to fill open positions, as Dr. Franklin mentioned, related to the district's priority list. Adjustments have also been made with regards to income and expenditure projections for known changes related to award letters, revised revenue calculations, and expenditure projections. This is a transitional year with regards to the new LCAP requirements. We continue to be working collaboratively in developing our LCAP, as Dr. Franklin mentioned, and we continue to seek input from the Orange County Department of Education with regards to revising and refining our calculation with regards to the local control funding formula. And now, Jocelyn will go over the current year projected revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, Tony. In reviewing the financial picture for the remainder of the fiscal year, we can begin with revenues. The newly implemented LCFF is the largest source of income to the district and represents approximately 145.6 million. Federal revenues is projected at 7.8 million and includes special education, Title I, Title III, and teacher quality. A 5.2% sequestration has been applied to most federal programs. Other state revenue is our second largest source of income and is projected at 23.2 million and includes Common Core, Special Ed, ACES, lottery, and mandated block grant. Other local income is projected at 6.8 million and reflects interest, community redevelopment funds, and local grants such as Cotsin, school readiness, and the City of Irvine grants. Overall, revenues are projected at approximately 183.5 million. Salaries are projected at approximately 156 million, which includes the negotiated settlements for salaries and health and welfare. Books and supplies are projected at approximately 9.1 million. Services and other operating expenses are approximately 20.9 million and have been updated for increases pertaining to utilities, insurance, and other operating costs. Capital expenditures are projected at 645,000 and include small capital purchases such as maintenance and grounds equipment, district vehicles, and copy machines. Other outgoing is approximately 1.8 million and includes special education excess costs and indirect cost. Total expenditures are approximately 188.8 million. When comparing the second interim with the first interim, which was approved in December, there was a slight increase in revenue of about 315,000. This is the net of the LCFF recalculation and the adjustment to federal, state, and local grants. Expenditures have decreased approximately 2.5 million, most of which is salary and benefits due to refinement of salaries and benefits and school site generated budget transfers. Transfers out have increased due to additional transfers to deferred maintenance and transfers of community redevelopment funds to the Special Reserve Fund. Now Diana will review state economy, proposed budget, and LCAP.
Thank you, Jocelyn. The proposed California state budget for 2014-15 points to a state economic outlook showing a slow but consistently growing economic recovery. The unemployment rate remains a concern, with job growth improving but still lagging behind the rest of the nation. The wall of death that has been building for the last 10 years with school district apportionment deferrals is starting to come down. The governor has started the buyback process this year and proposes to completely wipe out deferrals in 2014-15. To protect public education during the eventual economic downturns, the governor proposes two rainy day funds, one for education and one for the rest of the state budget. The California state teachers' retirement system faces a growing unfunded liability. While the governor's 2014-15 budget does not propose a solution, a plan for shared responsibility will be formulated for inclusion in 15-16 budget. Along with additional funding to implement LCSF, there is a proposal to establish a continuous appropriation for the LCSF to provide a greater certainty to districts similar to what was provided under the revenue limit. So how does California stack up against other states in the nation? Overall, California's per student expenditures continue to lag the national average, ranking 49th in the nation in comparative data for 2011-12. There is a swing of over $11,000 between the top position and number 49. Just a few other educational considerations include gap funding, which is a percentage at which the incremental increase in the LCFF is funded. This rate will fluctuate and is reactive to the state economy. The LCAP regulations are now adopted, and together we move forward with an aggressive timeline for development of the report. Transportation is, has recently come to the spotlight with the issuance of Legislative Analyst's most recent report, which outlines three different funding options. And categoricals outside the LCFF, which include special education, are receiving a cost of living adjustment. Our educational world is changing, and it's a different place. Adapting to those changes will require clarity of purpose, clarity of plan, clarity of responsibility, and above all, collaboration. The accountability system enacted as part of the LCFF appears to be balanced between local and state control. The priorities of the state, which form the basis for the annual goals for the LCAP, are broaden scope and emphasize both quality and quantity. All the elements of the LCAP, such as aligning with the budget, determining district goals and needs, incorporating labor agreements, just to name a few, need to come together in a cohesive, cohesively to form a three-year rolling plan that is updated annually. Shifting our perspective is required. Our old paradigm focused on input, our new system requires us to think first about outcomes. The process of connecting the district's budget plan with educational outcomes leads to a progression of continually improving services to promote student success. Now Tony will discuss multi-year planning and projections.
Okay, so in developing the multi-year projections, we really took several issues into consideration, but greatest concern is the issue of managing the exposure to risk with regards to the, these improving economic times. Managing our risks in a changing world will, will come with both opportunities and challenges, for sure. With the improved economy and the potential for growth in Prop 98 funds, there's a high expectation to incorporate these additional revenues into the multi-year projections. We know that there's a great demand to improve the district's educational environment in regards to lowering class sizes, adding, restoring programs, new hires for direct instructional support, and other support functions. We must also recognize that while the increased funding will be significant, it's, it's not sufficient to meet all of the identified needs. The local control funding formula is a new and unfamiliar method of funding allocation. We can't talk about it as voodoo magic type of accounting, and with, which really adds an increased amount of uncertainty in terms of assessing risk, not only financially but academically as well. And then, while the concepts of the formula and the LCAP in terms of the formula, local control funding formula and the LCAP appear to be very simple and straightforward, the complexities with regards to implementation process and the follow-through can have unintended consequences and risks. Consequently, we must continue our practice of careful management of our expenditure commitments. We also know that the changing environment creates a need for a contingency reserve to weather the storm in bad times. As Diana spoke earlier, the governor expressed the need for a rainy day fund. In fact, the County Office of Education is also, in other financial aspects, are suggesting districts have a higher level than the minimal level of reserves going forward. Still, we know that there's a need to increase and improve services for our targeted students and assess the impact of the changes that are being implemented. So reviewing the multi-year projections, I just want to look at in terms of a few things that we noted. Overall, revenues are projected to increase by approximately $16.3 million in 14-15 year alone. This is primarily related to the increased funds related to the local control funding formula. COLAs of 0.86% and 2.2% are projected going forward for the two outgoing years. Revenues will increase only about $2.2 million in 15-16, and this is as a result of the fact that you have a lower level of funding gap that is being funded, as well as the loss of Common Core funds that is included to the tune of about 3.5 million in the 14-15 fiscal year. Growth is included in the projections going forward, as well as expenditure increases reflect that growth, as well as step and column changes and other benefit increases, and as well as other increases in cost for goods and services and other program cost changes. The ending fund balance going out in terms of the projection is really, for the first time in many years, projected to be stable. And so, yet, we must still maintain reserves for items such as revolving cash, stores, and benefit accounts, accrued vacation. We also have the, the additional reserve to address the many, you know, the many uncertainties that continue to exist. Our district will continue to have a rainy day fund of its own. That rainy day fund is basically called the uncertain LCFF, and that's basically what we've been kind of directed to kind of show in terms of future reserves. In addition, there's funds received for the federal reinsurance, federal early retiree reinsurance program. This is better known as the ERP program, and funds are being set aside to basically pick up past healthcare cost increases, and these funds are projected to be exhausted in the 15-16 fiscal year. We also know that as part of the district's current year priorities, that we have a number of currently unfilled positions, as well as positions that will not be implemented until next year. So we have set those funds aside, knowing that these funds have already been committed. Then there's the discretionary LCFF reserve account, and basically this represents the available funds of additional ongoing funds as a result of next year's local control funding formula increase. So this reserve has a compounding effect going forward in future years and is projected at the end of next year at about 13.4 million, and then projects out to $27 million. And these, once they're actually incorporating expenditures, of course, that reserve will go away. The Board and Cabinet will be working on a plan to allocate these funds. We talked a little bit about the LCAP that will be incorporated in, in terms of utilizing those funds, and this will be used to be, to meet the district's needs going forward. We've also increased reserves for facilities maintenance and technology refresh, as funds must be built up in anticipation of these costly implementation of these programs going forward. Reserves have also been set aside for legally restricted fund balances that have very specific purposes. This leaves us a, basically a declining reserve for economic uncertainty, but unlike in the past, these reserves are actually in very good shape. We're looking at basically 9% this year, 6% the following year, and 3% in that third year, and that is good news. And finally, as I've said before, these are, projections are based on the best estimates that we know today, and they will change as the assumptions change, and so we'll constantly monitoring and making changes going forward. So, what's in store for the future for K-12 education as we know it? As noted earlier, the education world is changing. We're, we are at the beginning of a major shift in thinking. District staff is currently working on its TUSD's LCAP. Kathy will present that in, in May, and so we're looking at this process, and this will be a process that we will work collaboratively with all stakeholders in filling the district's goals on an ongoing basis. All the while, as per the guidance of the Orange County Department of Education, as well as agencies such as School Services, we must continue to protect the general fund against the state's revenue volatility by carrying a higher level of reserve than just the minimum. But with the new dollars comes excitement and increased expectations. However, we, we must not forget the practices and informed decisions that we made in, in the past that have allowed us to survive in the last recession, because as we are all well aware, education's funding or financial picture quickly changes from year to year. Another component that I think we need to be aware of is actual requirement under GASB 45 with regards to maintaining the funds and reserves for the long-term cost of retiree health, health and welfare increases and obligations. Current, actual estimates are in excess of $15 million that we need to be aware of and need to address long-term. And then there's a level of the gap funding that Diana talked about. Those percentages in terms of what we get funded, in terms of a, of a ongoing piece of the increase in the local control funding formula, is really subject to the volatility of the state's economy. If times that are good, the percentage will be high. When they're not so good, the percentages will be lower. So with the future of, in terms of the state's economy unknown, you know, we're likely to hit a few bumps along the road. Education's unfunded pension liability, as Diana talked about, is another looming concern that's hanging over our heads. The governor has made it his number one issue or priority with regards to proposing that all stakeholders have a plan for shared responsibility to achieve, that these funds are, are, or this liability is managed over a 30-year period. Really what this means is, is that we're going to be faced with increased costs with regards to STIRS and PERS contributions going forward. We don't know what those are right now, but, but I think shortly there will be, that amount will be known. As we know right now, PERS has already kind of said in two years, there will be an increase with regards to the PERS contribution for, for school districts. So looking, looking forward and reflecting also back, I think our final thoughts are, is that, is that we should take a step back and reflect on, on where we've been and where we must go. We know that we're moving away from the old system categorical compliance, and where that has been the rule to a system of accountability based on the local needs measured by annual progress towards our goals. We should remember that even in the, when the situation looked bleak, and in the past, we were able to weather the storm. We know that we also have a goal, we also have a plan, and now we need to realize that, that vision of our plan. So, in concluding with, we ask the Board to certify the 13-14 second interim budget report as positive, and, and understand, the Board understands this fiduciary responsibility with regards to maintaining solvency, not only in the current year, but two subsequent years, and that we'll make whatever adjustments necessary to, to maintain that positive certification going forward. And so with that, I'm open to any questions the Board may have.
Are there any questions?
I had a series of questions. The first one has to do with the LCFF revenue limit for this year, which came in, this shows, we came in almost a million dollars less. What's that all about?
So, that, when I talked about the nuances in terms of understanding, and this is kind of a voodoo, you know, kind of calculation in terms of doing that, there was a, an adjustment as we have been, this is the first year it's been implemented, in regards to how we do that calculation. And in that calculation, there was prior ADA from the county office that was not considered because it wasn't part of the, of the calculation in the initial budget projection in, in August that became known during the year. I want to also say, this is version 15 that we're presenting in terms of, of the calculation with regards to the local control funding formula. So it's gone a metamorph, it's gone through a metamorphosis in terms of actual calculations. So we're really going through a guess, and the one thing I will say as well, is that we have yet to receive- And the one thing I will say as well, is that we have yet to receive an actual formal validation of the calculation, other than what we're getting from services such as school services, CSBA in terms of that calculation. We have yet to see a formal calculation from the state. We won't see something probably until after the end of this fiscal year. But based on all the information we have, that, you know, the calculations that we've gone through have followed the guidelines that the county offices has put.
So, how are they deciding how much money to send you every month?
Well, right now, it's based on, it's based on past, last year's apportionments adjusted. So, they're basing it on the prior year, but we have yet to see a real number. But as this thing, as this-
We were hoping that you were just asking and they were just sending.
And the reality is, is that we have received monies, but they're just advance apportioning us until the actual-
I've just never, knowing our fiscal conservatism, it's very rare to see-
Correct.
A number like that, of that magnitude, in that direction. I'm used to seeing them go the other way.
And that is, we talked about the volatility of the state funding, that's the issue. Fortunately for us, and Lori's not here, but we also had some additional special education funds of about the same dollar amount. There was a new out-of-home care facility that was opened up, and that generated us basically almost the same amount that we lost on the other end. But this is really what we talked about in terms of the uncertainty of what we're dealing with, and why we have to have reserves set aside, because we don't know how this formula is going to go forward. This formula, in terms of what is involved with regards to not only student enrollment, ratios of students who are free and reduced, and the Local Control Funding Formula in terms of gap funding is totally different, and we're all kind of going through this together, and it's very, very unstable right now. But it's starting to, it'll firm up going forward, and that's what we're trying to deal with.
The other question I had, the deferrals that you're showing are elements of the imbalance that are, you're calling LCFF discretionary. Those are, is that, in other words, money that we've set aside to supplement programs or positions, but we haven't actually spent it this year?
Last August, when we went through the process of the initial budget, I identified a dollar amount in terms of actual dollar increase with regards to the Local Control Funding Formula going into thirteen, fourteen. That was about six point six million dollars. So, what we're trying to identify is, these are additional dollars that we can do things with. Okay, so what we've done is now, as the year has progressed, we have allocated, as we talked about the district priority plan, we've allocated those dollars into expenditures. So, that went away after the initial budget going into the first interim. But now, as we're doing our multi-year projection, now we're doing a recalculation of next year's numbers, and that dollar amount has now been identified as thirteen point four million. I will say that's at this time, because, you know, as we start to develop the budget, there's going to be changes. We're going to talk about another plan, we're going to talk about the LCAP and moving that forward, and then that number will be moved into expenditures going forward and be shown as an ongoing expenditure.
Okay, I understand. In terms of the unfunded pension liability, I think it's important that people realize that in our case, unlike a city, we're just the handmaidens of the state, and they tell us they want X amount and we have to pay it. It's not, we don't have the control over that process that a city has.
Correct.
Okay, so how are we able to budget when we're not sure what, sure when or how much the STIRS or PERS increases will be?
Well, there's already a lot of talk about shifting that expenditure over to education. I think currently, the deficit at the state level with regards to STIRS, depending on who you read and what you read, is about in a seventeen billion dollar range. At my last CBO meeting, the chief financial officer for Cal STIRS came and basically gave a presentation to us. And going to the end of this fiscal year, they will be allocating dollars to every district in the state in terms of identifying what they would say is not your fair share, but what they're allocating to each district in regards to-
Our share of the seventeen billion?
Their seventeen billion. And so, you already know, the writing is on the wall. There's a lot of pressure with regards to the governor wanting to take care of that debt, and it should be. And so, to not think that education's going to be part of that is probably being short-sighted. We will be probably paying more on the short-term. PERS has already, there was a lot of pressure at the state level with regards to PERS, and PERS does have the ability to change that rate going forward. The PERS board, the governor put a lot of pressure on the PERS board to try to do that this year. They did not yield to that pressure, but they're looking at two years from now, and then they've committed to doing that. The exact dollar amount and the percentages, we're not aware of, but we're going to have to take that into consideration. So, as you look at those projections, those numbers will change once we get more feedback and information as that unfolds.
And lastly, are we actually budgeting something for the GASB forty-five?
We do have, we do have dollars set aside for that. I can't remember, Diana, what's?
We've been moving in that direction now.
Six, seven million dollars, and we're at fifteen million. So, we know that in the past, we have not set aside dollars for that, because, you know, in the hard times we've been, you know, we couldn't. But I think that's something we're going to have to look forward in terms of doing that, and so that'll be a-
And I think it's really important to be as responsible as we can be with all, any kind of unfunded liability, whether or not we cost it, which we didn't in generally the case of STIRS and PERS.
So, every year, or every two years, we're required to have an actuarial study, so we'll have it done, and this will be next year. Next year, we'll have an actuarial study of both our workers' comp and retiree health benefits.
Well, thank you very much. I know you've all been working incredibly hard this year with all the shifting sands beneath your feet, and we really do appreciate it. Presentation was great.
Finally, I just want to just recognize Diana, and Jocelyn was not feeling well, and Alex, I do see, well, she was back here. They've all really worked very hard in terms of putting our budgets together, and I'm, you know, indebted to them, because without them, we wouldn't have the presentation. So, thank you, Diana, and Alex.
Yeah, I want to thank you as well, and it looks like you might have a digital learning coach or something on your next presentation. When I was first on the board, I used to just look at that really boring screen up there, and you'd have typing, but now you have really flashy PowerPoint.
Yeah, we've got some digital experts here.
Very good. Very calming voices, too, all along. Even Jocelyn was cold. I remember when Diana was so nervous her first year. You are a pro. I mean, I feel really like, if I close my eyes, I feel like I'm in really safe hands when you're talking about the budgets. I'm telling you.
You should be.
It was really great getting the paper copy as well as the digital, because I knew there were some pages I wanted to go back to to ask questions, and it was easy because we had the, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we're at a, it seems like with the Local Control Funding Formula, I think the public needs to just know that, you know, the difference between I don't know and I understand exactly what the ramification is is going to be a year or two, maybe even more. But we're in a whole new revenue formula, and we're going to learn by doing, so to speak, and experiencing. But we really appreciate you taking time to do the report for us.
No problem.
All righty, we have a motion and a second to receive and certify the report. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you again very much for the report. Moving on to the consent calendar, for all the consent items, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Cento, seconded by Mr. Davis, to approve the consent calendar, all consent items on the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to the following.
We can do all those readmissions.
Yes, there's readmits.
I'll move the six readmits, A through F, and section twelve, as one motion to accept all, approve all the readmissions.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Second.
And that's seconded by Ms. Cento to allow or to vote on these readmissions of students back into the Tustin Unified School District. Is there any discussion over these six readmits? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Moving on separately now to some discipline actions, that's student number twenty thirteen dash fourteen dash oh-nine. Is there a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion pursuant to what's set forth on the agenda under subdivision G? Is there a motion? It's been moved, Ms. Davis, seconded by Ms. Cento. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to student that's set forth in subdivision H, that's twenty thirteen dash fourteen dash ten, is there a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion pursuant to what's set forth in the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Davis, seconded by Ms. Cento. All in favor of approving that matter, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Moving now on to the last item, subdivision I, student number twenty thirteen fourteen eleven, is there a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion that's set forth in the agenda under that action item? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, and opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so there's, for the record, three ayes and one nay on the vote for that, with Mr. Davis being a nay. So, that will carry three to one. So, with that done, we're going to move on to board member comments. Mr. Abelov, are you ready to make a comment?
Can I make more than one?
You can make as many as you want.
I didn't know if that was plural or not. I'm going to deviate a little bit. Instead of talking about what's coming up, I'm going to talk quickly about some things that I was at, and some special things. Dr. Franklin already talked about the Every Student Succeeds Breakfast, which was held on February nineteenth at the Tustin High Event Center. It was a terrific event, and when you hear, when you heard about all these students from all ages throughout the district and the things that they've gone through and are going through, and how they still manage to succeed and be in school, and you realize that the problems you have that you think are so great are so meaningless compared to what some of these students are facing. And they really are special kids who are doing whatever they can to succeed, and they have the support of their parents, which was extremely evident that morning. The next day, I went to the swearing-in of our new Tustin police chief. Our previous chief had retired six months ago, and what's nice is that there were two captains in the department that they were choosing between, so it was nice that they were able to stay inside. And at the time, six months ago, they had appointed Charlie Solano to be the interim chief, and that was made official on February twentieth. It was held at the Clifton Miller Community Center at City Hall. It was a huge turnout by the community and other chiefs and police officials from around the county, as well as fire authority officials, people from the FBI. It was a very nice event and recognition. On March the fourth, at the Foothill High School Event Center, Foothill put on its second annual fine arts night, which was a showcase of both the visual and performing arts. It involved ceramics, drawings, painting, live performances, music by the orchestra, and the culinary arts students cooked and provided food for the event. And it was, I walked, I couldn't find a parking spot. I had to park on the street instead of at the event center, and I walked into the event center, and it was jammed. There must have been hundreds and hundreds of people there. I know that Francine, did you stop?
I was there early. I got a parking space in the parking lot.
I saw Dr. Franklin there. I know Lynn was there. And ironically, I was glad they actually had to move it an hour earlier, because I was leaving from there to go to my Tustin Area Council of Fine Arts meeting. So, it was just kind of ironic going from that event to the Fine Arts Council meeting. A couple of days before that, I attended a, I guess you could call it a town hall meeting put on by our Assemblyman Don Wagner, and that was held at the senior center. And it was extremely interesting. There were a lot of, actually, there were a lot of people that showed up, over a hundred. And one of the, he talked about a number of things that are happening up in Sacramento and his perspective, especially with the fact that there's a supermajority in regards to Democrats versus the Republicans, and how that comes to play, or not come to play in terms of things that the Republicans want to get done. But one of the things that he talked about, which brought out a lot of the people, effects can have a big effect on our high school graduates, which is, there is in committee right now, and there's a strong possibility it's going to come out and be proposed to the legislature, to place on the ballot in November, the vote to allow the UCs and the CSUs to utilize affirmative action on admissions, which was something that was removed by Prop two oh-nine back in the late nineties. And the reason is because there's been, over the last decade, a increasing mismatch in demographics and ethnicity of the percentage of high school graduates in the population versus the percentage of admissions to colleges.
To the UCs.
To the UCs and to the CSUs. And to the point of where some of the demographics show that there's only half the percentage of certain ethnicities being admitted to the colleges based upon the percentage of high school graduates, whereas in other cases, there's twice as many admissions in other areas compared to half as many percentage-wise in the high schools. So, there's apparently a big push by the Democratic side, by the Democrats, to allow the UCs and the CSUs to go back to an affirmative action-based admissions program. So, that has, that could have, obviously has significant effect, and there were a lot of, a lot of members of the community there from across different demographics who were there to talk to Assemblyman Wagner and find out more information about that. And for the most part, they were, the folks there, I would say, were not in favor of that coming to fruition, and so they wanted to know what they could do about it, and Assemblyman Wagner's advice was, contact your local assembly people and senate people. Someone had recommended, well, can we have a march, or can we have a rally up in Sacramento? And asked to speak to the Democrats behind this, and he said, sure, but they won't show up, because they're going for it, and if anybody's against it, they're really not interested in talking to them. And then finally, that same evening, I was at, my wife and I, daughter were at the Beckman High Performing Arts Center for the Ms. Tustin Pageant, first time I have actually attended one. And out of the eight contestants, we had, four of them were high school students from our district, two from Beckman High School, and two from Foothill High School. And it turns out that the new Ms. Tustin is a high school senior at Foothill High School, and that is Emma Foss, and she will be representing Tustin for the next year as Ms. Tustin and participating in the Ms. California Pageant, which can lead to the Ms. USA Pageant. So, that's it for me. I've been around town.
I only want to mention that I attended the Irvine, City of Irvine State, along with Mr. Soria, the City of Irvine State of the city. And just to say that we've been very fortunate that the City of Irvine has included the Tustin Unified and the students from Tustin Unified that are from Irvine and in Irvine in all of their, in every possible way, including, of course, some funding for some counselors and nurses. But they feature Tustin Unified, just as they do Irvine Unified, and all of the State of the City matters, and it's just great. So, on our list of things coming up, we have eighteen schools in Tustin Unified that were selected as twenty thirteen honor roll schools by the California Business for Educational Excellence Foundation. This is Arroyo, Bezwick, Gwinfoss, Hicks Canyon, Ladera, Myford, Peters Canyon, Red Hill, and Tustin Ranch Elementary, and TMA, Tustin Memorial, CT, Curry Hughes Pioneer and Utte Middle Schools, Orchard Hills Schools, and Foothill and Beckman High Schools. All these schools were recognized for demonstrating high academic achievement, and this foundation, CBEE, which is, let's see, California for Business Educational Excellence. CBE, which is, let's see, California for Business Educational Excellence, identifies and honors the highest performing public schools in California, about two thousand schools this year. And they are consistent, honor roll schools are consistently raising student achievement and have made significant progress towards closing the achievement gap among all students, which is something we're particularly proud of here in Tustin. And it's supported, CBE is supported by numerous business organizations. And I will also give a, well, Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, it's the thirty-ninth Annual Friends of Tustin Schools Community Recognition Dinner, which is one of my favorite events of the year, and one of the really nice community events in Tustin. It is at a different place this year because of a fire at Beth Shalom, and it is at six PM at Sher Ha Malat, did I pronounce that correctly, in Irvine? It is sponsored by the Tustin School Management Association and the PTA/PTO Coordinating Council. The theme is, "Our Community Volunteers Keep Us Connected." And district administrators thank volunteers, community members, and business leaders for supporting our schools, so it brings together all the different elements that make our schools successful. And a community service award is presented to an individual or group.
Thank you, Francine. Mr. Davis?
Three things, a couple of things happening in March. This is District Wellness Week, and March tenth through the fourteenth, and there's events occurring at each of the elementary schools to promote fitness, especially cardio fitness. And then before we get together again, we'll have the principal for a day come on March eighteenth. Not sure, it's the day after St. Patrick's Day, hopefully everybody will be sober. But local executives and community leaders will take on the role of principal, and then and they tour, and they're involved in the school in the morning, and then Dr. Franklin invites them here for luncheon and asks for their feedback in terms of what they've learned at the school and what they'd like to see in the community. And the other thing going on right now is, we're in the middle of our Classified Employee of the Year program, and which, similar to Teacher of the Year, we recognize classified employees at each of the schools, and each of our sites, we have a few sites that classified employees work at in addition to schools. And so that'll be, that process is happening, and will be concluded and recognized at the May nineteenth meeting.
So that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. And I'll close just with a basically a comment on what all of our board representatives talked about from all the schools, and that was just basically how well we did in the CIF playoffs this year at all three of the high schools. And I've said this before, I'm huge on academics, obviously, but, you know, the sports, the sports scene in the Tustin Unified District is a really healthy one, and I really recommend, if you have, you know, find the time, especially during the playoff season, to go out, and if, you know, you like Beckman or Tustin or Foothill, go out and see a game. I saw some soccer games, some basketball games, and I just thoroughly enjoyed myself, and the spirit is alive at these high schools. I almost feel like they get a glimpse of the college experience. The audience, the student body is so spiritually supporting their teams, and it's very good to see, it's very good to see. So with that, I just encourage you to, if you want some really fun and inexpensive entertainment and exciting entertainment, go out and see your local teams play. So with that, I think I'll close it out. I wish everybody a good evening, and we'll be seeing each other soon. So with respect to that, is there a motion to adjourn, and is there any special motion I need to make?
I move we adjourn in memory of retired teacher, Richard Kearns.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you and good night.